Welcome you here tonight. This is our work session meeting, September the 5th, 2013. If you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the implication.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we just thank you for this evening, the beautiful weather that you've given us. All that are here tonight have good crowd. Those scouts are giving up part of their time and the scout leaders out here. We ask that you be with us tonight, help us make the right decisions for our city. And we just ask that you be with each one as we go home tonight. All this thing to pray with your name on every note.
I want to welcome our guests and districts tonight, and especially our scouts there. Glad to have you all with us and hope you enjoy the meeting. I know it could be punishment for you, but maybe not. Glad you're here and welcome to the Canton City Council meeting. First, item on the agenda, Janet Lunda of the Cherokee County Board of Elections and Registration will make a presentation regarding some voting precinct changes. Yeah?
Mayor, Council, thank you for allowing me to come and speak with you tonight. Just this is an informational meeting for all the citizens of Cherokee County and the citizens of the city of Canton. We will be leaving shortly right after the meeting because we are going to be going to the Holly Springs Council meeting as well that starts at seven, so I will be staying too long. Many of you have a presentation. Of course, we're on the PowerPoint, but Anne did hand out some flyers and paperwork for you to look at and review. And I think Council and Mayor, you have those as well in front of you, so that you might want to follow along. When I had started back in the beginning of 2012, shortly after the November election, I started relooking at the statistics and the voting trends within Cherokee County and noticing that we needed to start making some changes to reflect what's been going on across the state of Georgia the last few years. And with that, we also looking at the cities as well. So this is what we're doing. Now, first of all, I want to make sure that everyone in this room understands this is not effective for this upcoming November 5th election. Okay? You don't take anything else away from this today. Make sure you know that. Okay? And also, one other thing I want to make sure that you understand, this does not change who represents you or who you would be voting for in a particular election. Okay? That is done by the General Assembly. Those are districts and so on and so forth. We do not do that in our office. The only thing that I'm proposing to change is precinct lines, okay? Where you maybe we do the location where you vote, the building you vote in, and the lines that are drawn within that precinct. Okay, the why, some people say, why are you doing this? One thing is the funds are being allocated for 42 precincts throughout the county. Yet voting trends show a significant increase in advanced voting. If you all recall what advanced voting is, you know, it's one week prior to any state, federal, state, or local election, which would be a county election, we have our office and four other locations open for early voting. And people are really taking advantage of that. In your handout, you will see a pie chart for 2006 where we had 49,451 votes cast. And at that time, it had, you know, it was a steady increase from 2006 from the presidential election. Okay? In 2008, we saw the uprise of the early voting at 51 percent. People chose to take that option. And at that time, we had also increased the number of advanced voting sites we had throughout the county. And in 2010, we saw a little bit of a decline, but the total votes cast were a smaller number in a non-presidential year. Now, all these figures are based on November general elections, okay? And then 2012, we saw the increase to 53 percent of early voting. And on Election Day, the decrease in the early voting. So that means on Election Day, people going to their polling places is not as popular as we have seen in past years. Okay, another issue as a result of the 2012 redistricting, we currently have 50, 55 splits. With the proposed changes, the precinct line, the precinct lines, it will reduce the number of splits to 39. Now, try to take out of this equation just city, okay? Remember, this is the county wide as well as the city. And in your precinct where you may vote, a portion of that precinct may have a different House, Senate, or Commissioner School Board district, okay, within that precinct. You know, my neighbor a few miles down the road may vote on a different person than you would. That creates a split. With that split, that creates a different ballot style. With that different ballot style, means additional printing cost. So this would reduce that. The alignment of the county and city precincts, and this is what really affects you guys here tonight, will accommodate the voters and will reduce the cost of holding separate elections. Now, the city of Canton back a few years ago chose to mirror up their city precincts with the county precincts, which that was six city precincts that voters within for the city limits of Canton. With the new proposed changes, it will only be two precincts. And before you, you have a good outline of the two cities that we're proposing, the two city precincts, which would be the Canton precinct, which would be here in this building, and the River Green precinct at the River Green Clubhouse. Again, Van, as I said earlier, advanced voting has become a familiar part of elections process in Georgia, expanding opportunities for all registered voters. Okay, now on a general, I mean, with a federal or state or local election, you have 45 days to request an absentee ballot by mail. You have 21 days of in-person voting, and most of that time beginning that 21 days is only in our office at 400 East Main Street. Plus, you have one Saturday if it's a federal or state candidate on the ballot. And that's the second Saturday prior to Election Day. And then you have the one week prior, which were all of our advanced voting locations are open from 8:30 to 7:00 p.m. on federal, state, our local elections, not municipalities, but just for the other, from 8:30 to 7:00 at all the locations of the Ball Ground Library, the Hickory Flat Library, Rose Creek, Woodstock, and our office for early voting. And then you have that one final day for Election Day. And that's where we're finding that our numbers are really coming out early as opposed to the Election Day. Consolidating current precinct lines from 42 to 28 are the solutions for to help with this problem that we've had of low numbers on Election Day. No voter will have to travel more than 13.07 miles to get to their polling place. And the average distance a voter would have to travel is 2.93 miles. One comment I would like to make that would affect this particular, in the city of Canton, you will notice on the map, I do have the proposed map up here, the north, what we're calling now the North Canton precinct, or what we'll be calling the North Canton precinct, is at the First Baptist Church of Canton. And that goes up to the county line, you know, so it, that's the furthest distance anyone would really have to travel to get to a polling place. And with that said, most of those people, I think, are probably used to traveling a distance to the grocery store anyway, so I don't think that's going to be a major issue. With that, there's some neighborhoods up in the northern part of the county that are in the city limits. And they will have to bypass some of those county precincts to either come to the, here at City Hall, or the River Green Clubhouse, which whichever place that they would be voting in. Okay, the Election Day precincts that we have chosen for this proposed plan have adequate parking, and they have a sufficient amount of space within the precinct. We are looking on big elections such as presidential elections or primary elections, you know, for the larger turnout. You do not ever know the minds of the people. So, you know, like in 2010, we did have more to come to the vote, the election day. But the buildings and the parking places are going to be able to accommodate those. We will have enough workers to accommodate the crowds. We're not looking, you know, to reduce any numbers of machines that we will deploy out to the precincts. Those will be adequate as well. Okay, you will see in the handout, a couple in this handout, in the Arnold Mill precinct, and you can also look at your city precincts. I have given you what the combination of the precincts combined to make this one new precinct. Also, you have a flyer that gives a little bit better definition of the precincts that will be combined to make the new precinct. Also, I have given for that particular precinct, the total voters that would be in the precinct, and the average distance for that precinct. Also, you will see the gender and race that is involved in these new precincts. All of this can be found on our website, precinct by precinct, all 28 precincts. Okay, also on this map, you will see such as the Arnold Mill and the surrounding area of Arnold Mill. And also on the map, you will see, if you're looking, you'll see little dots. That's the populated area within that precinct. Okay, such as the city of Canton, it's not as clean cut as what you might see in the precinct of Arnold Mill. The city limits are fingered out somewhat, and we just go, you know, have went in and guided those voters to put them in that, those particular precincts that are in the city limits. Anytime there's an annexation, of course, that will be done as has always been done in the past. And with the technology that we have today, and not solely relying on paper maps, that will be done through our GIS department and our department to update those, and as well as your cities as well, your city IT votes. Okay, any questions so far? Okay, now, a timeline, where we're at now, like I said, we began this process in February, and we worked with our county IT depart, our county GIS department to get this data and from our voter registration system to get it all together. Our office staff were very diligent to get all the roads properly located and the voters properly located. So that's where we are now. And as of August, I brought this before the Board of Elections. And the Board at that time voted in August for, to allow me to move forward with this proposed plan. The month of September, where we are now, is that I have taken this out and to folks such as you, to the Board of Commissioners, any public group, any organization that's willing to listen to me to tell, me to tell them about it. I've tried to make as many engagements as possible that have had me. And just to get the word out, because I've decided that people don't read the newspaper, and, you know, they don't come to the council meetings, you know, as in the commissioners meetings. So I'm hoping that you will be able to tell your neighbors, your coworkers, and folks around you, your neighbors, about this proposed changes. Okay, also in September, September the 16th, we will be having a public hearing at 400 East Main Street at our office for anyone to come and make any comments, ask any questions, and to hear of the proposed plans. There has been advertisement event in the paper. And then on October the 7th, we will have another public hearing that will be advertised in the paper and at our office at 9:30 in the morning. And at that time, the Board will vote to adopt this proposed plan. Okay, then we go into January, where, you know, we have some election dates changed for 2014. So we've got to start moving fairly, fairly quickly to get everything implemented into the voter registration database. And then we are looking around February, all voters in Cherokee County will be notified with a new precinct card. And then on May 20th, the federal judge has ordered the state of Georgia to have our federal general primary election on May 20th. Once the General Assembly meets, I think they will meet to discuss or to make plans to hopefully mirror that general for state and local race, elections for the primary with the May 20th date as well. All right, on the last page, and for all of you that do not have a copy, our website is voter.cherokeega.com. You'll find this on the front page of our website. You can click on all the proposed precincts and pull up maps into statistics and get information. At any time, not just during the September 16th or the October meeting, I welcome any comments that anyone has, or any thoughts about this proposed plan, and for it to be taken under consideration and discussion for the Board of Elections. Does anyone have any questions?
We're going from six precincts in Canton to walk to two.
That's correct. You're going from six precincts in Canton to two. At this time right now, the precincts that are affected for a city election are the RT Jones, Clayton, Canton, Unaveter, Teasley, and Liberty. And now you'll just be down to two.
Canton and River Green.
Canton and River Green, that's right.
Any questions?
I have one question. It says you're going to implement it beginning in 2014. What is the first election that is possibly?
May 20th.
May 20th. So before that election, we're going to be able to start changing the decision?
Yes, in February, February to March.
So everybody is going to be, even though we're having these hearings, are all going to?
Oh, yes. Like I, yes. And as I said in this presentation, every voter will be mailed a new precinct card in Cherokee County. There's only two precincts that is not affected by this, and that is the Sutally and the Salacoa precinct. That's the only two that are not affected. Any questions from the audience?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Holly Springs now.
Next item on the agenda is a proclamation regarding firefighter appreciation weekend. I think Donnie's here. You're here to take this, right?
Yes.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and read it. If you want to come up, we'll just go into this one. Whereas our nation can never forget the heroic example of first responders and fire personnel when the worst attack on American soil occurred on September the 11th, 2001. And whereas this year, the 12th anniversary of that heroism will be on Wednesday, September 11th, 2013, we invite our citizens to pause to remember that horrific day. We pledge never to forget what touched all of us then. And whereas the public safety and fire protection of lives, businesses, community agencies, and homes in Canton is a major responsibility of the Canton City Fire Department. And whereas the sacrificial service of many volunteers throughout our county supplements and sustains much of the work of our paid firefighters. And whereas firefighters remain ready to respond in the event of fires at various stages of threat to human life and structures. of threat to human life and structures. And whereas our firefighter, firefighters demonstrate acts of heroism in rescuing citizens from the threat of fire, and often enter burning structures to bring them out to safety and medical treatment. And whereas our firefighters work dangerous accident scenes on our highways and streets, risking their own safety to extricate victim, victims from vehicles. And whereas the entire population of the city of Canton is indebted to our fire service personnel, therefore, it is resolved that the week of September the 8th through the 15th, 2013, be designated as firefighter appreciation week in the city of Canton. On behalf of our citizens, I, the mayor of Canton, do hereby proclaim this proclamation and resolution. Thank you. Thank you, Donnie. We really appreciate what the Fire Department does for our city. I mean, I hope to express that as, as each of us should express to the Fire Department, uh, our appreciation for their efforts. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to consider the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. I'd like to add, uh, 10 H, and that would be a discussion on trail carriage to Adewal River Park. Discussion. 10 H.
10 H, okay. Anything else? Any other additions or changes? I have a motion to approve as amended in second. Any other discussion? If not, those who favor signify by saying aye.
I oppose, no. I'll move to voting for the motion.
Okay. All right, now we have the, uh, you have the minutes in your package from August the 15th and August the 22nd, both the special call meetings, uh, and the public hearing meetings which we held on behalf for the, for the budget. Are there any questions or changes that need to be made to those minutes in your package? If not, I entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Now, a motion in second to approve the minutes of August 15th, 2013, special call council meeting and public hearing minutes, August the 15th council meeting minutes, August 22nd public hearing minutes, and August 22nd council meeting minutes. Any other discussion? If not, those who favor signify by saying aye.
I oppose, no. I'll move to voting for the motion.
All right, have consideration to acknowledge the financials, which is, which are also in your package through, uh, the reports through July 2013, which leaves two more months on this fiscal year. Are there any questions or comments regarding that? I think it's, uh, I think it is, it is interesting, uh, through July, uh, our general fund is approximately at 98% of the budgeted revenues, uh, and our expenditures are about 77%, which indicates that, you know, we're in, I guess, on target probably to exceed 100% of our budgeted revenues. And if we spend an average amount on the, for the next two months, we'll, we'll end up with about a 6% of, uh, net, uh, realization of revenues over the expenditures, which could potentially be in the, in the, in my opinion, in the $500,000 to $600,000 range. Anything else? You want to have any other comments? Okay. Now, we have our 10-minute public input. We had one individual to sign up, Tom Blankenship, which is 119. Did you want to, did you want to make some comments?
No, sir, not at this time. I just wanted to, uh, to recognize the council, to, uh, to let him, uh, know that we were working on our citizenship merit badge.
Great, citizenship merit. Is this troop 241?
It's 119, sir.
119, in, uh, Canton?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. We're glad to have all of you here. Hope, hope you find it rewarding. All right, the, uh, under old business, uh, clarification of reserve versus unassigned fund balance, Mr. Cummins.
Mr. Mayor, I asked that this item be added to the agenda because I wanted to sort of move us towards along the intent that Mr. Rush, uh, initiated by setting aside reserve funds. And we got into this question of what's unassigned balance versus reserve. Now, we do have two accounts, and we have an account set aside with, currently with 328,522, which Mr. Rush refers to as reserve funds. The problem is our auditors combine all of this into one big lump sum called unassigned balance. And the reason is, is that the reserve funds do not have a designation of what they are for. And, uh, therefore, they really aren't treated as reserves unless they have a designation. And I would like to ask Mr. Rush, or I'd like to ask two things of this council, maybe Mr. Rush, to write a definition of what that reserve or under what circumstances the council could use it, because as it is now, we could use it for anything that we voted for. And he may want to designate, or we may want to specify the circumstances under which reserve funds would be touched or used. The second thing I'd like to do, because it's various, well, Mr. Huffman and Mr. Rush both brought up, that we are shy of what is recommended in the amount of reserves that we should have, is that I would like to increase that, once we have a defined reserve account that has the definition of how we could use it. I'd like to see us, you pull some more from unassigned balance and increase that balance to 500,000 at whatever point we come up with the definition. And that's the only reason I put that on the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cummins. Anyone have any comments in there? Item B, discussion of FY 2014 budget, possible amendment, Mr. Wood?
Well, I pointed out to Mayor and Council in our management letter, uh, last week, that the only change in the budget from what was adopted or approved at the prior meeting, uh, was that the contingency allocation had been changed from 300,000 down to 280,000, because the $500,000 number that eliminated, uh, the firefighters, actually, the budgeted number was 480,000, as opposed to $500,000. So with that change, the only change being reducing the contingency from 300 to 280, everything else in the budget stands exactly, uh, as was previously predicted.
Okay. I, basically, what I think we need to do there, just, we just have a budget amendment prepared for our, for action next week.
Going back to, uh, Mr. Cummins coming, we got reserve, we got unassigned, and then we got contingents. You want to clarify, now we've got three type of funds that are in question.
I don't think it's in question, it's just what I, you clarify, that they're expecting that we will vote on things during the year that we will use contingency funds for, that we hadn't thought of at, during the budgeting process. Whereas the unassigned balance has typically only been used, I guess, for emergencies or for things that are totally beyond what that contingency allowance. And the reserves, in a pure definition, should have a defined usage. And, and I think we could define it to, in other words, we could be setting aside for building repairs and say, that's, that's a defined usage, and we could only use it. Or we could define the usage as the circumstances under which we would utilize that money.
I understand that. What is, what do we have as far as contingency?
Well, contingency is, is, uh, is money included in the budget.
Right.
It is a line item, it is a specific line item in the budget.
And that amount is approximately what it, it, it will be in the FY 2014 budget, $280,000.
And that money can be used to cover anything that was not anticipated in the budget. Could be some catastrophe, could be something that nobody could have anticipated, or something that was inadvertently omitted from the budget, but it's, uh, it's money that can be used for any unanticipated purpose.
Mr. Beckford?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, uh, reserve fund, when it was brought up and it was put actually into a fund, was designated for the purpose of, if this city falls close to being bankrupt, we have a rainy day, 30-day, I mean, three-month or 90 days, or whatever it might be, fund, that's what that reserves for. The unassigned fund balance is money's left over from the previous year that did not have a home. It was not designated. The state sets up a program where it's can be referred to as the unassigned fund balance. That money is the one that we dip into. As far as I know, we have not dipped into the reserve. That has never been done. Problem is, we have not really put more money into it as we hoped, because we're always running real tight. But the unassigned fund balance is our piggy bank, and we do not touch the reserve. I think, versus trying to dream up a hypothetical issue, I would leave it to the council whenever this comes before them as a critical issue, then they have a back-off position to look at, to say, we do have a reserve fund. Other than that, I don't think we need to establish some sort of defined, leave your hands off of it until something happens.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just, I'm just looking at it from the auditor's perspective. They combine it. And we can call it anything we want up here by name, we can say it's any sort of purpose, but at the end of the year, in the financial reports, whether it's the surplus funds as unassigned balance, or it's a designated set aside amount, the auditors and the financial statements will show it more or less as a total pot of money available for those emergencies.
Any last?
Well, Mr. Mayor, as long as we know what that pot is, we leave the reserve fund alone, we know what it is, and we use the unassigned fund balance. So it's, the auditors are not ones that's going to make the decision when it comes down, how we're going to spend it.
But if we were trying, if we were spending, we would probably take contingency funds first, then from the unassigned balance.
That's correct.
And if, and if we've depleted all of those, and we're down to 325,000, well, we're in deep trouble. We're going to have to go to the bank and borrow again, to make a payroll.
That does happen to a lot of cities. They did, a lot of them bar tax anticipation, that was fortunate not to have to do that for once in the last, at least six years, I think. But, uh, we did have to do it. Okay, we don't have to do it again. A tax anticipation, that was right.
It's a ten, and we paid it off in short order.
Right. You have to pay them off before the end of the year.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, anyone else? Not, uh, well, the, item C, update on the Canton Unified Development Code revision, Mr. Wood?
Uh, previously, the Mayor and Council recognized, and wisely, I think, that we, we really need to coordinate and systematically uniformize, uniformize our code with respect to any development related codes and issues. We have 11 different broad distinct sets of code sections and regulations that are currently scattered throughout various chapters of our overall code, including zoning ordinances, the development code, uh, community standards, and others. The city hired MAC Tech originally, which is now, uh, a part of AMAG, to serve as our consultant. And the Mayor and Council appointed the citizen steering committee to provide input in that process, which has been done along with the planning condition. Uh, you have had a work session or two on it within, uh, the past year or so. The entire process has been lengthy, but hopefully the end is in sight. We hope to be able to present a draft form by the end of next month and enable you to conduct work sessions during the following month, which will be November, and allowing you to advertise for public hearings and possible adoption by the end of this year. But the bottom line, to get it, line, is that I, it is our goal to have a draft copy presented to you by the end of next month.
Well, we certainly need to move forward, and I think if we can stay on that schedule will be good, because, you know, this, we, we need the updated, not just the zoning ordinance, but more importantly, I think, the updated development codes and building spec, regulations and so forth, and also our street standards as well. And I think that's something that's come into play most recently. Uh, we need to make sure we got the proper procedure and standards for our, uh, construction of the streets, because eventually, and hopefully not too far off, there's going to be, some developments going to be returning here, and we need to be prepared for that, and hopefully we will be. We need to be prepared with the proper, uh, protection through these development regs and, uh, and, uh, ordinance as well.
All right, the, uh, next item, item D, discussion of management of athletic recreational programs at city parks, the Councilman Huffman and Mayor Spohner, one at a time, please.
As I think everybody is well aware of, that the, uh, Adewal River Park is moving right along, although we have had some delays because of weather, but in these past week and what it looks like for next week, it looks like we're really going to make some major gains. We do have a bridge over the river. It's 180 feet by 12 feet. It's currently sitting on its piers, uh, and it's about 14 feet in the air, so we don't have to worry about anybody trying to climb up unless they bring a ladder down, and I would hope that would not happen. But in the, uh, process, we also will have three soccer fields or three fields of play in the park. We have a program currently looking at the Heritage Park and, and additional usage. We have Bowen Park, we have other parks around the city. I went through and looked at the old, uh, ordinance for the city, and, uh, it left much to be desired, when we have this many different, uh, parks, uh, playfields for citizens to come and get on. In your package, I think you all had the opportunity to see the Youth Athletic Association Policy Procedure Manual. It's a draft, it's a work session. We want to look at this, and I would like to be able to make a motion at the next council meeting that we approve this with any corrections that anybody might have, so please, uh, bring them forward or let me know, whatever. Then, once this policy is in place, then we have a better handle on what's going on. For many years now, we've had the different teams, associations come out and cut the grass or do work on these different parks. And after a period of time, uh, it's almost like, uh, they built a fence and said, this is our property now. It's not their property, it's still city property, we still responsible for it, and we owe it to the citizens to make sure that everybody has a fair and opportune time to play on these facilities. So that is the spirit that this policy was put together for. Uh, one thing that I, as I peruse through the document, uh, it does, that's, number 14, the concession products, uh, we do not have any, uh, contract between Atlanta Coca-Cola and Bottle Company at this current time, uh, so that one, we scratch that one off, but, uh, maybe someday we might. We might have somebody else come in, want to have exclusives. So there are opportunities for us to bring in some funding on top of what's going on. Now, the resolution that I want to be able to bring forward next week, like in two weeks, is in reference to establishing the athletic field use policy. And that gives, as you can see on there, we have four categories. And the number one category, user, is the city of Canton. Residents of Canton have first right. The second one is the local recreational providers, and that's the nonprofit organizations, and it defines in here, but we need to really look at this because it's kind of tricky. and defiance in here, but we need to really look at this, because it's kinda tricky. To qualify as a local recreational provider, no less than eighty percent of the participants must be residents of the city of Canton. I don't know, I don't think that's an ideal situation. We need dialogue on it, because I know there is a lot of participation on these sports clubs that are Cherokee residents, but we wanna make sure our residents get the first shot in. Category three is the county recreational providers, and that includes a number of different ones, and again, it falls in, they must be, and this one, I don't have a problem with, they must be residents of Cherokee County, eighty percent. I don't have a problem with that one. Then, the fourth category is local civic face, base, and educational groups. Five is county civic face, base. Six is business, other contractual organizations, individuals, groups, and I think that pretty well covers the gamut of different ones who might become forward looking to use it. This also identifies how they must approach, get permits, and get usage on it. It gives ample time to come forward to, to the committee that will set this program up and say, okay, you have use of this particular field on this particular time, throughout this particular season or whatever. It is fair and just, and I think that's something that you all need to agree upon, look at.
Thank you. Mr. Beckford? The only thing, no, one thing that I, I see, John, that we might need to address is that the ballparks are being built with the Canton bond money where it owns Cherokee Is this policy gonna be for that park?
No, sir. There, there was an agreement, there was a letter that was written, I can, I can probably dig it out, but it's been over a year ago, when we came up with the issue about whose money it was, remember this, that we were gonna lose some money out of our fund, and we ended up getting three point one million back. In that agreement, it would say that the county would operate and run the Killian Park facility. We, in other words, walked away from that park, because they wanted us to be partners in it and experience that money, and we had to lost that money over at the other park. So, moving away from that, but still, it's our Canton taxpayers' money to build that park, whether it's on their property or it's Cherokee.
It is, it was our money for our citizens.
The bond was a Cherokee County bond, it was, it was not broken down by saying, I went through this with them, trying to get ten percent out of nine million, get nine million. It, it's their bond, their selection. This is what we have. I understand what you're saying. It's gonna be nice facilities over there, they're kinda running behind on that one, but what we're gonna be looking at is what we have control of here in the city.
Does, Mr. Wood, does Mr. Kent Jamie have any documentations or some type in his files as to what our obligations are for parks in both, I mean, fields in both?
Yes, sir.
We probably need to be, then those together, because these policies or these procedures will take over whatever's been done there, which could lead to conflict.
Mr. Russ? I have essentially one comment and one question. The, the comment is that when we were talking about the, the baseball fields, the council at that time specifically said we did not want any control over those baseball fields. So that, that point. And with, the question is, is who is the Youth Athletic Association? And, you know, I, I can't imagine you stayed up all night writing all this, John.
Oh, he did.
Two nights?
Two nights. I'm a visionary.
It's defined in, it's defined in the policy.
Is it?
It's a thing, a nonprofit group that is for the purpose of providing youth sport.
I mean, is there somebody that is that?
No, it's anybody who comes qualifies as a youth.
Okay, that's, we're setting a policy to establish someone that can take over the, okay, that's what I hear.
No, 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 that's not to take over management, that's any group, like a soccer association that wants to use the fields. Those are the rules and policies under which they use our fields.
Then, then who is going to administer the policy?
That's the next step. Mr. Scott, you had a comment before we go to the next step?
The only comment I had is, and it was great, and the two comments I had, you addressed one, was fourteen on the concessions, but the other was, we're addressing only youth athletic associations, and it's conceivable that we're gonna have adult athletic associations. There are adult leagues that set up, for example, softball, or adult leagues that set up adult soft, uh, soccer, so we should probably look at changing this policy to be athletic associations rather than just youth athletic association. Those are the only two comments I had.
Anyone else on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
To Mr. Russ's point, before we can get what we call somebody to manage this program, we have to define policies, procedures of what this city wants. Then, once we have that defined and we have the resolution, then we can come back and say, okay, now here is our program, this is how we want it managed, then we look for the management group to accomplish that goal. The, the other thing is, just for your reading enjoyment, under the Charter Code, Chapter thirty-eight, Park and Recreation, and that's Section thirty-eight, thirty-two, Youth Sports Association, and it is very undefined. There have been, I think you were asked the question about, or somebody asked the question about prior users, there've been handshakes, head nods, kinda poking the ribs, yeah, these things. I don't think we have it defined, because some years ago, we had the soccer association come in and said they have documents. We're in the law, we never did see those documents. So I don't think they're out there. It could be, but I don't think we have agreements. On top of that, core engineers dictates some of these issues, so they're leaving it to us to manage this and set policies and procedures. So we really need to come up with this thing, and hopefully, hey, you need any readings you're having.
You'll enjoy it.
Because we do need to move ahead, 'cause it's around the corner, the spring programs will be coming up pretty fast, and we do have grounds for the kids to play on right now until Etowah's finished up, but we do have facilities out there. So we do need to get this settled.
I think the easiest part is putting together the new parks, most more difficult is going back and taking care of the people that we have been allowing to use our bowling park fields and make sure that we treat them in an appropriate manner that they might feel like they're, if the, well, I think they should be given some type of priority, in fact, they've been there, but it doesn't mean that they own the park.
This, this wouldn't affect, this resolution would not affect the Y, would it?
It would not affect the Y, this would tell the Y, if we decided to say, this is what we want, now we need somebody to administrate it. It could be the Y.
But it wouldn't affect their programs?
No.
That they would be.
They'd have to go by the priority, they can use their building, gardens, right?
Excuse me.
That's a garden.
No. This will set the policy that if the Y wants to use a field, they have to come to board this particular, not the council, but the board who's managing it and saying, we need the field for soccer, and we'd like to have it on a Monday, Thursday from four to five. They will be pinned in on designated fields for that. Others could come in. When there's no activity on those fields, somebody can look and see if there's anything playing, they can form up their own little group and go down and play. And as far as adults, I don't have, I think they're probably out there. Soccer is.
Business is for adult softball leagues.
But under this, under this, would, would it be correct to say that if the Y did want to use a field, that eighty percent of the participants that they had would have to be city residents?
Only, only to get that priority, though. It's just quite, that's just priorities. They may not be local, and they may be county ones. If they're not county ones, then they fall to, without, I don't have to add to that policy, it's just, put them up in the event that there is a group that is eighty percent Canton residents, they'll all be hired, neither will. I don't think there are any such.
Oh, okay. I got, that makes sense.
In essence, if someone came in and had, we had two, two requests for the use of soccer fields, and one was eighty percent city of Canton residents, and the other was the Y, which is eighty percent, let's say, county, the, the city one would have priority according to this policy over the Y's athletic association. That's what it basically is.
My assumption was that you'd want city-based groups down first ditch.
Would, would you expect that the county might do this on their ball fields as well?
This, I think this, this was a specific county policy, adjusted to the city.
You can see it in the county.
The categories, number one category is city of Canton. And, and the Y falls down, to use that as an example, it falls down, I think, in number three or four, number three. So if, if two of them are bid, category one gets priority. That's how it is, this program, so that we don't have somebody else sitting there going, this is defined.
Most of the Y programs are done at schools. They're doing these programs already, but they do them at the school. So they are set up to do these things, and what the Y will do is that they will screen. Today with these kids, man, I'm telling you, I, I got two grandkids over in Roswell, they screen the coaches, they do background checks on them. It's, it's amazing, they gotta have certificates. The football coach and the assistant coaches have to have certificates, that they've been trained on recognizing a concussion, and those, those certificates have to be on file with the association. So the, the work that is done, screening, making sure the appropriate people are on those fields, it's only for the protection of our kids.
That's it. Just one last little point. It has been bandied about that the Y could possibly be a, a management team, but that's fine, because this is the ground rules, this is what it says, so they don't play top priority, this is what we get. So it sets the control, once we establish that, then we can move ahead to this next phase and get that accomplished, and we'd be ready to move on. Long overdue.
We gotta let the Y look at it to make sure that they will conform to this. They're gonna read through it, make, they might say, well, we can't do that. Well, okay.
Okay, let's move, move along. Clarification of streets policy passed on August fifteenth, Mr. Cummins?
We passed this policy relative to building permits, lo and behold, the, the very first question came up, and it, it's in an area where there is two sections of Franklin Park, which is part of River Green. The first section was completed, turned over to the city, but the street that runs through that section and continues on to the second section, which has only top coating, is named the same, it's the same street name. Now, lo and behold, in the first section, that's already been dedicated, there are two lots that are on a completed street, and they wanna build, I believe it's duplex, they wanna build there, which is within the zoning and everything to build, but we've somehow restricted them from building on a street that's already completed and dedicated to the city. So this statement, if a building lot, is a building lot is located on a finished and dedicated city street, and access to the lot is via finished and dedicated streets, the restriction of the building permit does not apply, because we would be restricting them in an area that's already been dedicated to the city.
Yes, sir.
In that example, when we accepted that street, that's made it dedicated on the plan, that, we'll just call it that half was dedicated, we did not accept the balance of that half. So I don't see where we have a problem, that the balance is what they're gonna come back with.
Exactly.
And so therefore, we did not accept the whole, we accepted the half. And it's on the plan, it shows it's on the plan, so.
But the two lots that are in that half that we accepted could be construed within the, what we passed, not to be having a building permit allowed, because it's on the same street name. So this is just a clarification, if it's already been dedicated.
If, by, the way I stand it is, is if you can reach that lot, the completed, accepted streets, then you'll be able to get a building permit on it, even if somewhere else down the line, or even the same street weren't, was not finished, it wouldn't matter, as long as the traffic could be flowing on completed streets from the main road to the building lot.
Mr. Dyer and I have talked about.
Yeah, one thing that I didn't think about until just listening to y'all talk, it needs to say dedicated and accepted. Accepted is what matters.
Add that to it.
All right, so if, if we need to amend that, we can do that in the next meeting. We'll be in trouble to, where did, you have you wanted to do?
We did vote on that in the last meeting, in the other terminology there.
Where did, where does this fall? Into the building inspection department?
It's the development, development.
Oh, you mean, building permit.
Building permit.
Yeah, you get a building permit.
So this, this gotta be, that's where it's gonna be put in.
Right.
It's really just the resolution, it's not, it's not an ordinance, it's just expression of policy to the staff.
That's right.
That's really what you've done.
That's what I'm asking. Basically, we put a moratorium on all residential building permits where the streets were incomplete and/or there was no, and, and there was no performance bond on those. That's what we said, and, and basically, the circumstances that he was describing there, it's on the street, and, and part of the street's finished, but the rest of it wasn't, and so just to clarify that, we probably need to change the wording a little bit.
Well, this way you should.
Does anything else? Our new business, discussion of the Canton stage rental policy. Mr. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of, well, I guess it was last month, several weeks ago, you set up a committee to establish a portable stage rental policy, Mr. Bryan, Mr. Goodman, and myself, and so we, we looked at it, talked with staff, and I believe every one of you has a copy of the, the one that we sent out an email was the wrong one. The big difference, I mean, is that we're, we're including a rental fee, we're, we're up seven fifty for the first day, seven hundred and fifty, and a hundred dollars for each day thereafter, and required deposits and required security deposits. We're also gonna require certificate of liability insurance. Now, the other thing that we, we discovered is that the, the stage very often is, is rented by someone who doesn't necessarily need the sound equipment, and the sound equipment, when it's rented with the stage, it comes out on a separate vehicle, so we've added another separate fee for the sound system, because my understanding is that the stage costs the city a hundred thousand dollars, and the sound equipment costs us sixty thousand dollars. And both are aging, and both are going to be needing repairs, so with, with this amount of money, rental money, we can then build a capital fund to facilitate the repairs, not have to take it out of the city budget. We're also restricting the rental only within Cherokee County, instead of, we've had requests, I understand, from Rome to rent the stage. So that, that's essentially what it is, the staff seems comfortable. Staff seems comfortable with it. City manager seems comfortable with it, so I'd recommend that we adopt the policy.
Mr. Scott?
I have one question. What is a component unit of the City of Canton? Is this the Main Street?
Yes.
I have a problem charging Main Street anything to use it, because they're promoting the city. So personally, I'd have a problem charging component units of the city.
The, the one, the one reason for that was that the last time the Main Street people used the system, they, they messed up the sound system and caused us to incur, I don't know what the expense was, but caused us to incur an expense to repair the sound system or make it usable to the city staff. Am I correct, Mr. Wood?
Well, I don't know the Main Street did. I was informed by our, yeah, I was informed by our recreation staff that after the, after a First Friday event, that the sound system tags had been changed. And I, I'm not familiar with the sound system, so I don't know exactly what that means. But apparently it created some extra work for, and some complications for the state.
The other thing I'd see there, too, is sort of like charging yourself, if you charge Main Street, Canton Tourism, and some of the others. You know, I, I think we need to encourage the use of that stage by those particular agencies, and not really discourage it. And I, and I think the, the limited cost that we would incur by our staff having to set those up for those particular agencies is somewhat negligible, I think. The more I thought about this thing, and it bothers me a lot, that, that we're renting it all. I mean, you know, in one sense, I don't, that's, that's city equipment, and I, I don't think I could rent a dump truck from the city, could I? It's, I don't think I could rent a motor grader or one of these limb choppers that I could use for two, three days, you know? I just, I, I, I'm not saying we shouldn't necessarily do that, but I'm just a little perplexed as to actually how you justify renting, renting that. And I know the city's done that for, for some time. But to rent out city equipment and/or personnel, I, I just don't know if that's the proper thing to do.
Well, we, we have police, aren't they? We don't rent them out, do we? Well, they're charged. Well, hell, we go for the city.
Yeah. They, they, I thought they did that on their own time and got paid. I didn't, the city has rented them out.
Well, it's.
The city's not renting the police out.
Are you talking about a police officer?
Yeah. No, they do that on their off time, even though they're in uniform and everything, I think. And any contract with them agencies for security, but.
But we should protect ourselves with a deposit from getting, destroying where the city does incur an expense. And if it's a city department, and even, maybe they should, they might not be the performers up there messing around with the equipment, but they should be responsible to see that those performers don't tear up the equipment.
Well, if, if, if an agent sees our component unit created damage or anything, I would assume that those are the units that we give money to, and we could charge our budget, didn't we? I mean, although, and still, I can charge it yourself, I'd say that.
Well, it is, but it.
Somewhat tells whoever caused the damage, next time they do it, because we're gonna take money from their budget, they'll make sure that they handle the equipment correctly.
Well, maybe you could have some kind of deposit and, and get back to them if it's back in good order or something.
Right.
From their agency, but still, it would be, I mean, if it's Canton Tourism, or the Downtown Development Authority, or whomever, or Main Street, you know, it's still the city. City business, doing business, and, and having events on behalf of the city. And, you know, if it's, if it were, I, I don't see really, see it as any different than our own staff doing it. Even if our own staff did, it created a problem, you know? I mean, you do the best you can not to, and if people abuse stuff, then you deal with the personnel and stuff like that. I don't know, that's just what. Jack?
Now, I would agree with you, because people in our staff are using it, that's an extension of the city. Taxpayers paid for it to start with, and then the ones that paid for it to have it repaired. But we pay for it now, it all comes from the taxpayer. So actually, yeah, I have a problem, I have a real problem with renting it out to people such as Build a Faith, they do a great job, and they've, they've used it for the last couple of years for nothing. And now, all of a sudden, we're gonna charge them a thousand dollars to use it. I don't have a problem making them pay a deposit, but I have a problem with charging them all of a sudden to use it when we have let them use it for two years for nothing. And in fact, all these people sit down here, and the ones that are home are the ones that paid for it. It's not ours, it's not yours, it's not mine. It's the city. It's, it's the city people, and taxpayers that pay for this. I agree that what the mayor said is right. These departments should be using it. They're promoting the city. You know, they, they're out there promoting the city, doing different events, bringing people in, helping these markets. That's what we're all about. So I have a problem with that. I think they should pay a deposit. If they don't tear it back, if they don't tear anything up, then it should go back to them. I also have a problem with, when we have an event like Build a Faith, which we've had, you know, two, three thousand people, this is a high school, and then some, you know, body that rented out to have a rock concert. That's just my opinion.
I, I do, I do feel like we, it is a capital piece of equipment that is, in time, is gonna wear down to the point that it needs to be replaced. And I do believe if we're gonna replace it, that whoever uses it pays something towards that, and we keep it the capital fund to replace it at the appropriate time. I have no problem charging for that as well, but no deposit. If they should, if they should cause some major damage, but just general wear and tear, sometime we gotta replace it. And I don't, how much, a hundred thousand dollars?
That's what it costs.
That's what it costs back then.
And it's in need of repairs now. The hydraulics are leaking, that's internal inside the walls. That's what we were told. But, but I, I would, I would disagree with, with my colleague here. I, I don't think we should ever give this thing out no charge to anybody, because where do you draw the line? I mean, you have, one group says, well, you did it for them, why can't you do it for me? And it's just, that's, that, to me, is a bad policy. You're either gonna rent it or not rent it. And it's paid for, the city bought it, but if we use this rental policy, then the renters, whoever they are, are gonna fund the replacement and repair of it. Instead of, I mean, instead of hitting up the taxpayers for another one, so that they can, we can loan it out to somebody else for nothing. And as far as the component units, to me, the component unit has a budget. If they know what the budget's gonna be for renting it, they can put it in their budget. I mean, it's just paperwork anyway, but, but at least it makes them aware of the unit's value, and make them more responsive to whoever's gonna be using it under their auspices.
Well, my main complaint is this event is next month, so they've expected, they've not said anything about it, now we're bringing it up, and we're gonna change it within a month. They planned all year long to use this, because nothing's been said. Now, I, I understand. You're gonna change the policy, that's fine. You, you don't wait till the last month to change something.
We could have an effective date on that, it's, you know, it, what if, what if, I think we need to look at this, we'll act on this, I assume, at the next meeting with any adjustments or amendment, but I would think it would have an effective date, and it might not be till the first of the year, or even maybe first of another month or something, I don't know.
I mean, we're not, we're not trying to increase the scene right now, just to get the seven hundred dollars from them. There's nothing planned there. It's just happened to come up at this time, and they happen to be scheduled, and I agree with the mayor. Just put an effective date on it, and let's go.
Yes, sir.
I think I'll go down to his two questions. City, and the city, city function, and we will rent it out and charge the individuals who want this. The other one is city use only, period.
Nobody.
And if they don't, they're not affiliated with the city, but they might have been using it for a number of years or whatever. Some situation running into the ballpark. These, these things have been running along for a long time. We have been, I hate to bring up the fact that the poor little girl that was killed, you know, they had a rally in December at the stage down at the Y. They had a lot of politicians there come in, watching, were making speeches about whatever, crime. And it had no function with the city. But I know the city rolled it down there, set it up, and no cost. And that wasn't what we sent in about. City wants to use it for a function, but, so we got inside, city on, or it's open to the public, and the components.
The other factor is the, the liability. I mean, if we, if we loan it to anybody, or if we give it to them free, and someone gets hurt, the city is liable. And if they don't have a liability insurance, they can purchase the liability for, for the day, for the event, someplace, but they need to have that. And, and the seven fifty is not a new number. That was the number that's been around for a long time. All we did was add a hundred dollars for every day after that, and then, for the sound system.
And security deposits.
Anyone out?
Sean, we will.
We'll have one.
This will come on the agenda for the next meeting, I assume, as proposed, unless, unless someone had an amendment to it at that point, you know? Either voting yes or, or no. When you vote no, I would assume, I would assume if you vote no, you're, you're voting that it would not be rented at all.
It'd be city use only.
It would be city use only at that point, yes, at city agencies.
That has no charge, or you're just not gonna rent?
Well, that, that would be, you know, that's another aspect we gotta figure out. I mean, like I said, it's kinda like taking out one pocket, but the other. But, you know, my feeling is you don't charge for it, if it's a city agency doing the work on behalf of the city, holding an event on behalf of the city.
Mr. Mayor, so you're saying that no vote would be just for the city's use only, period? No other organization?
I think, I honestly, I think you take two votes.
Two votes.
You take two votes. You could take a vote to reject what the committee has come up with, and then it would take a vote to not, to not prevent it at all, to forget, to take a two votes. So I would assume we will have that on the agenda for the next, next meeting, and, you know, anyone that has any thoughts about any amendments to it or anything, that matter on what? Okay, moving on. All right, discussion of senior trash pickup rates. Mr. Rush?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, this is not a new topic, at least for me, I've been talking about this for about three years. But the senior rate of seven fifty is established in the year 2000. I'm just gonna say a couple of facts here. In the year, and at, in 2000, I don't have the number, but I think the, everybody else was paying thirteen dollars for their trash pickup. In 2004, it was thirteen dollars, and the senior rate was still seven fifty. 2006, it went up to sixteen dollars, senior rate was still seven fifty. 2008, it went up to sixteen fifty, and the senior rate was still seven fifty. Now, the current cost from 2011 to 2013 is ten dollars and fifteen cents for the seniors and ten dollars and twenty-nine cents for the non-se seniors. And I think that's just simply functional pricing, because when they bid it, they had to give us a senior rate. So it's essentially, it's the same cost. Now, household growth since 2011, the non-se seniors have increased 1.9% to current date, and the seniors have increased 9.3%, ninety-one households versus a hundred and twenty-one households. So my feeling is that in a perfect world, we shouldn't be using the trash collection as a profit center. Everybody should pay the same thing, the city shouldn't make any money off of it, because we don't provide any service, all we do is bill it. I think that's, if I'm not mistaken, I think Woodstock charges everybody twelve fifty, but, but that's beside the point. But that, that's in a perfect world, and that's not gonna happen. And my, my objection to this is I feel that the seniors, and I want to take away the, the benefit, I mean, the discounted rate to the seniors, but I think the seniors should at least pay the cost of administering the program, so that the rest of the citizens don't subsidize the senior trash pickup. So I'm gonna, I was suggesting that we increase the senior trash to ten fifty and leave the others alone. If we have other options, we could, we could drop the other people price to whatever we wanted to do, but that would reduce the money in the budget, that would cause us a problem in our financing. So I'm, I'm just gonna make a motion that we request Mr. Wood to increase the senior trash pickup rate to ten fifty with the next fiscal year.
So you're gonna make that motion next meeting?
No, I'm happy today. We, we could do it now.
Well, you know, I need, I need to get into this policy that we adopted in May the seventeenth. I know we violated it many, many times since then, but, you know, this is really not a voting meeting theoretically, according to the policy that was voted on at that time and passed by this council. But, you know, we, we violated, if you want to violate it again, go right ahead.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Second motion.
Okay, that's second. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Our contract with waste management is up in 2014. In October, I believe, it's runs from current, with our fiscal year. The concern I have is that we need to discuss coming up, should we be in the sanitation business at all? Woodstock, I believe, has switched to where direct, the customers are directly billed from waste management, and that's a relationship that they, that each individual has relative to the trash pickup. That's one thing that should be considered. Another thing that's been done in other communities, primarily in Florida, is they use different-sized receptacles for different needs. Two things that would stay to me about seniors and their garbage is that, number one, they don't fill up that huge container that we have. The second thing that's come out of our own community, Mr. Bear, Bearsford's of mine, is the size of the receptacle for a ninety-pound woman to move up and back, even though they say they'll pick it up at the door, they're still pushing it around. I think we ought to wait on this change and look at the entire sanitation subject well in advance of the contract renewal, and make a determination at that time as to, A, do we stay in the business? B, do we possibly let waste management handle it directly? And if so, what is the fair amount to charge the different consumers? We know that a family of four is gonna put out significantly more garbage than the widow that's sixty-eight years old, living by herself. And I, I just think it's premature just to take and grab a number. The other thing that bothers me is, personally, is that I got chastised on the twenty-second of the last month, because I had been requested to ask this council to consider a change to the budget. And I'm trying to determine how this is different than what I tried to do on the twenty-second, and got chastised, because the budget has been set, let's move ahead, and let's not change it. And this would require a change to our budget. And so just on philosophical basis, I don't think this is the proper time to do it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think it is the time to do it.
Surprise.
Surprise, surprise. But I give you the reason to time it. I have a great deal of respect for Mr. Cummins and his analytical expertise, but whenever there's something that comes up that resembles an increase, we wanna get down into the weeds and dig, 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 and this is not something that's that complicated yet. I just don't want to go through this episode again and drag it out, and drag it out, and drag it out over an issue that is relatively simple. Now, as far as having smaller containers, smaller containers turn over too easy, which throws trash all over the place. So I. So I think we have the service that they'll come down to the door and pick it up. If they want to use it, fine, we all should let them know, make sure that they all know of that service. It's their move. But no, I do not, do not want to get involved in this going down into the weeds again. And this is something simple, I say let's vote tonight.
Let me make a couple of comments. I'm sorry, Jack, you did have your hand up, I apologize.
I just want to make a comment. You know, last week, two weeks ago, we voted for no increases in taxes. And I've seen a lot of paper, a lot of comments, and I've talked to a lot of people in the community. It was very well welcomed, and we're very appreciative. I think to go now and hit up our senior citizens, of all people, people who have the lease, yeah, they have the lease, and they work the hardest to build this community. And then to strike them in the face of hatred, I think is the wrong thing and wrong message for us to send after we just did something for people.
Well, we're already going to give them a four and a half percent increase in their water and sewer rates. Now, if they're going to get that, that's already adopted. Here's the thing right now, you know, we have, we have used this garbage collection as a moneymaker. In fact, for ten months ending through July, we're about $225,000 in more in revenues than we have expenditures for the garbage. I mean, that's, that's a pretty, pretty good amount there. And now we want to raise this and get another, what, forty-two thousand, maybe, forty-five? I'm not sure if that's the way it turned out, it'd be fifty-one? Okay. If you get the 225,000 that we've already got, divide that by six thousand customers, we'll be giving them thirty-seven dollars a half back. Are we here to make money off of garbage, or should we sort of break even? I guess that's a question, too. We want to make money off of it to do other things. That's what we do, that's what we've been doing, no doubt.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, wait a minute, Mr. Bear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's one of those deals here, you make some of the money here, you lose money over here. We're losing money down at this roll-off site, the drains. We've been talking about doing away with that thing, but every time we do it, we think, okay, we've got to take care of the citizens, so we take the hit over here, but we made some money over here. It's a wash. So I understand, but three dollars?
Well, this is not a wash, I don't think, John. You know, that's included in the expenditures for the garbage.
Yep, it's a loss, we're losing money over there.
Over there we are, but in total, we're gaining 225,000 in ten months, and by twelve months, we'll have, you know.
I knew that, I would try to grab that for Etowah Park and be accused of stealing again. Other than that, my bad.
Mr. Mayor, this is a very great deal. We got to make some tough decisions, and I have to commend the ledger and their editorial.
Erica.
Erica that wrote. I mean, she hit, hit the nail on the head, that this council needs to make some hard decisions. Now, we've got that money, and I know it's in a trash fund, but folks, we're down eight policemen, eight. The main reason we're down eight policemen is because we're the lowest paid in the metro Atlanta area. Now, when you want a policeman to come, he may not be there when you want him. The same goes for the fire. Now, we've got the money, and the seniors are, they can stand up and pay that. We had one gentleman at a civic meeting, sit there and talk, talk to one of our council people about how bad that is, and then the next minute he was talking about it, he screws to Alaska. Now, don't go in, I just don't buy it. We can do this, and those monies, that sixty thousand dollars, that'll pay for us, one plus firemen. You're down eight policemen. We've got to start paying our way, and the seniors are the ones who can afford it the best. The people that can't afford it are the young people who have other mouths to feed, and they've got car notes, and they've got house notes, and they may not be out of a job. Every senior that's retired probably has something coming in. It's getting ridiculous. And that editorial says, "This council in the previous years has continued to pass the buck, pass the buck, and pass the buck." It's time that we do stand up and do something that's right. I am just so frustrated, the last night after I read that editorial, I couldn't sleep. And I took two drinks. I'm sorry to be so voiceless, but that's the way I feel.
Maybe you'll have three after tonight. So one thing, the, well, I'm sorry, go ahead, Bill.
I just had one quick comment, a correction that was stated earlier. This is a take and grab number, this is not a take and grab number, this is an actual hard cost. It costs ten dollars and somewhat cents. This is what we're proposing to charge the seniors, just the cost. They're still getting something like a six dollar a month break.
Anyone else? We have a motion and a second on the table. Okay.
What's that?
And roll call. Okay. Mr. Goodman? Mr. Rush?
Yes.
Mr. Cummins?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Senior exemption coming up next. All right, next item. I said we'll talk about the senior exemption next. Again, again, and again. Let's see, okay. reinstatement of the low-flow toilet rebate program. Attachment eight, if you will turn to that, if you haven't looked at that, it's not exactly an exciting reading, but what it, what really has precipitated this is the fact that our low-flow rebate program ended December the 31st of 2012. And I didn't know that either until I bought one of those low-flow things. Thought I was going to get a rebate and a discount at Lowe's, and it didn't work that way, so. But anyway, it needs to be reinstated, I think, to, who was it that dealt with the Lowe's at Home Depot and the others to get the 10% discount? Did you talk to them?
I talked to both the manager at the Home Depot and the manager at Lowe's. And I don't recall that there was any date set on it, but they said they would do that.
Okay. Well, they have, they have these application forms on the shelf beside the commotes. And it says must be filled out between January 1, 2012, December 31, 2012. Still on the shelf there, so I would, but it doesn't say anything, I don't think, about the extra 10%. I wonder if they were still on it, if that's still an ongoing, we'll probably need to do that, but.
I'd like to make a motion that we reinstate this, we might as well force this one.
Flushing the procedure down instead of making a motion that we chose to reinstate it, the big button. The big button, okay. So we will effectively immediately reinstate this. Okay. Did we get a second?
I'll second.
Have motion second, any other discussion? If not, there's a paper signature, if I'd say aye, those, no? Okay, it'd be reinstated, I think that we need, maybe our staff or someone could check with them and see if they're still on to that 10%, you know, off the shelf there, which would be good.
Yes, if we go back and get you the.
No, I'm not, no, I just missed out, that's all I, I just missed out, so I.
Look how much you save on your water.
I know, I saved lots of water, really. All righty. Let's see here now. Discussion of the Planning Commission Recommendation for KCUP 1307-001, Amerco, Amerco Real Estate Company. This is the U-Haul building over on Ohio Highway 5, near the radio station there. Twenty-one seventy-five million in highway request to operate a self-storage facility. This has been through the Planning Commission, Planning Commission has recommended for.
Mr. Rush?
Yes.
Might as well continue flushing it, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the recommendation and the request to operate a self-storage facility.
Unfortunately, I think there's good notice that you'll vote on the 19th.
Vote on the 19th, okay.
I think there's good public notice that the vote actually didn't.
So let me, maybe we, do we have any questions or concerns?
I do have one, are they going to be renting trucks there?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Before you vote?
Okay, so if that rental went into effect, that would be bad.
That's, my next question is that, do they, do they accept if we did that?
Have any choice if we did it.
But I mean, should we let it go in advance if that happens?
Well, it's been voted down once or twice already, and so, I mean, I don't know that we're going to do it after it comes up, certainly. You know, what he's talking about is a 3% rental car. Yeah, no, rental car, tax that we had considered and was voted down some months ago, which you may, you may or may not be aware of. But if it is implemented, then I would assume that the rental would be a 3% city tax, same as it would be in Woodstock and many, many other cities around, that we just have not implemented. And it would go, basically, I believe it has to go for like tourism or something like that.
We got rental trucks, we got four or five of those in the city, we never even looked at them.
I'm assuming that's a vehicle, I think.
I would think so. At least four or five. I think there's two right here going, going on.
One right across the street, or this way.
Yeah, that's right.
They must not have thought it was too bad when we was talking about it, they didn't show up, did they?
No, they only thought it was a rental car.
Yeah, but it was in the newspaper and everything, it was, it was pretty much public.
It was a rental car. Rental car, not traded.
I just said, we were going to expand it, I'm sure you did. Any other questions about that? It's going to be very constructive, and it's going to be a tremendous improvement in that side of town over there. And look forward to them getting going on it.
You know, we'll probably, they will probably quickly put in this couple of rental points down there.
You never know, it's like national. All right, it will be on the 19th to be voted on, but if anyone, anyone has any problem or any concerns about it, if you bring it up now, we'll.
I think we're all.
You're ready for it, I think.
I think we're ready for it, just go ahead and keep moving.
All right, next item. Discussion of the Ridge Road at Marietta Highway Interse, did I miss one? Oh, yeah. Discussion of agreement with Georgia Power for real cash utilities on Main Street pedestrian connect. Only question I have there is that will be underground, or they just move it over?
Move it over, not underground.
Okay. You have any other comments on that?
I don't answer any questions, we can go ahead and answer them. It is budgeted under 2014 roads and sidewalks, it's a management letter.
Okay.
No questions.
And for the next meeting, are we asking that we authorize signature on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that'll be on the next, next council meeting. Okay, discussion of the Ridge Road and Marietta Highway Intersection Improvements and the bid recommendation.
You were headed, I think, tonight, and Ariel photo was the project concept overlaid on that. That project was actually approved in concept in the 2013 budget, a year ago. So you've already approved that concept, but the project itself is raising the vertical alignment where the dip coming onto Ridge Road off of Marietta is so severe. We'll be backing up and making that approach more gradual and adding curb and gutter to the south side of Ridge, as well as installing de-signal loops and improving the pedestrian crosswalks. We're asking that at the next city council meeting, you confirm the award of the contract. But what that will entail, though, is that it will extend the contract payment probably into the next fiscal year. So a budget amendment would be necessary at that time, although that ought not be a problem, because the dollars appropriated in this fiscal, current fiscal year will not have been expended, so we'll have those dollars available to us. It'll just be a simple matter of approving that amendment sometime during October, with paper is necessary for the work.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir.
The dollars that we have budgeted, I see here, we do have the bids, so is the budget.
We budgeted eighty-seven thousand dollars. So can, does that mean, can they come back and say, well, we got to do something else, and it's going to be 187,000, or?
No, it's been bid out, and you're being asked to approve a little bit.
All right, any other questions? Well, we don't need, I don't think it's necessary, yeah. I appreciate that. Let's get as much off as we can, let's do it. We'll put it on the next consent agenda. Okay, the next, the next item is the discussion regarding the transfer of surplus radio equipment to Cherokee County Amateur Radio Emergency Service via service agreement. And I assume, Mr. Wood?
We've outlined that in the management letter, I hope it was had with the explanatory, but if any questions.
Who is this organization?
By personality, I don't know, other than what Chief Floyd has told us. What kind of service agreement would you have? I think the service agreement would have to address what service they provide in the event of natural disasters or emergency situations to our public safety agencies.
Don't we already have?
We said you already have.
Yeah, right.
We already have agreement with them?
No, no, they already provide that service, so they're providing a service now.
You have to have the agreement to be able to give them the equipment.
I understand, I just, I just wasn't aware that they were providing a service. I thought we had the service that calls us when the tornado's coming, on all the phones we have in the household, but I thought, you know, that was what.
This happens after it hits.
After, oh, I see.
After it hits, they get on the ham radios.
Are they ham radios? So we have ham radios in our fire department, is that what they are? I mean, I didn't know what kind they call them.
I think we just rely on them to divide communication. They're not doing it for the city necessarily, they're just doing it. What this agreement would say, they will do it for the city.
It's a good call.
What exactly did they do?
They love to talk on the radio.
Oh, yeah, apparently.
And when emergency situations come up, they'll say that out here, this river, creek, or whatever, it's flooded. It's impassable, they'll pass that on into central area.
Nine hundred and one, I guess.
And, yeah, kind of like, so they're saying this happened over here, this happened. So they're, they're just a communication link that helps our public service group, safety, to be able to have more eyes and ears on the road, okay?
Anything else on that? Okay.
What we're asking for is the direction for the council director always serves the agreement with this entity, which you would be effective.
Next item, Trails of Heritage Park to Etowah River Plant.
Thank you. Sorry, didn't have this in the packet, just got it today or whatever. But this is the connection from the bridge to Heritage Park. And they've been out, looked at the trail, or proposed trails. The alternance was discussion on having the trail, as you will see there, bend down towards the river and run along the river, then come back out, which is additional cost. The other one, the proposed, be running right along Georgia Power easement, down, cross the easement, and then come on up into Heritage Park. The bridge, when you all have an opportunity to be able to get on that thing and take a look, you're going to be able to look upriver and downriver, it's a fantastic view. I, I think I sent you a picture of that, didn't you see those? a look, you're gonna be able to look upriver and downriver, it's a fantastic view. I, I think I sent you a picture of that, didn't you see those?
Yeah.
And it, it is really a great sight to spend additional funds and monies to be able to bend this trail down into this area, and then we're getting into the buffer zone of the river and other issues there. That's gonna cause delays, so the quickest, straightest shot would be the one that you see here, not the alternate. I'd really like for you to study that over, and I'd like to be able to come back with some more findings, the cost of that, so that we can say, this is the route we take, give us a figure on it, and so we can be able to go for bids and get this bid out.
I'd love to speak there. Mr. Wood has...
Yeah, I, I learned, we, we ask Liz Cole, who most of you know, some of you may know, at least with, with Lamy, who has, who designed Heritage Park and is responsible now for reviewing and helping develop a master plan or supplemental master plan for Heritage Park. We ask her, as a result of her firm's familiarity with various Corps of Engineer issues, to look at, because we wanna maximize as much direct, immediate access to the river on, on that section of trail from Etowah to Heritage as we can. We ask her and her firm to look at whether or not we could, could, could get core approval to really run right on the, on the riverbank. She took that charge, she came back to us within the past few days and basically said, "I'd love to take on that project, but I've gotta be honest with you, you've got a severe level of wetlands right there on the riverbank, and in all probability, you would be talking maybe a year or eighteen months or so, you've got a three to one mitigation reimbursement factor that the Corps is now requiring, and it would take us not only some, some money, but some significant, perhaps more important, some significant time to be able to get that, that section of trail run right on the riverbank. So, it seems to us, the best route for the trail ought to be between the riverbank and the Georgia Power Easement, and if that's, meets the pleasure of council, then what we'll do is go to bid with, with that route being so designated, which David Shirley has already designated for us. We were just trying to capitalize as much as we could on the river. We could come back later, a year, eighteen months, twenty-four months from now, and go to that more desirable route, but I don't think with the bridge in place that you really wanna hold off on the trail pending core approval.
Mr. Mayor? At the Etowah Park, there is gonna be a number of locations on the river where people can stand right there and look over and see it. So, we, we are not put in a situation where nobody can see the river. They're gonna be able to see the river numerous times there, see it on the bridge, come down to Heritage Park, however that turns out, we're gonna have access for a whole lot of looks. So, I, I, I think going with, skip the alternative, go with the straight shot, let's get that so we can get that moved and get this, this piece of it finished up.
Yeah, on the top.
A question, uh, Mr. Mayor, you might hope you know this better. It's, it's an eight-foot wide pad? That's what's... Is that the same width that we have on Heritage Park? We do have, the bridge is twelve, and the truck gets going around.
If I'm not mistaken, Heritage is ten feet.
I'm sorry, he asked me a question or a problem. I don't know about Heritage, I don't, but I'm thinking we, we keep ten foot. It says Heritage, not ten foot. It says some disturbance.
That's a inch.
It says several point places. Some disturbance, ten feet east, south, center. Well, that is, that is heavily brushed area, so what they're talking about is cutting the brush back a little bit, putting that thing in, so if it's, if it's, what'd you say, it's eight down there?
Ten.
Ten. So, then you're gonna have five, five off the center line, which gives you ten, still have your five feet of disturbance, cut brush.
Yeah, I see, I can hardly read that.
Yeah. I just didn't want to have a problem with the pumping engine going in a different direction. The width needs to be, with bicycles and stuff, yeah. The, the other thing is, where we cross the Georgia Power Easement, they will have no problem with us crossing that easement as long as it's an eight-inch slab of concrete, because they have concern about their heavy trucks coming down, breaking up a four, six inch, eight inch with the suffice, and they're ready to sign off on that part. We did have to tighten our radius up on the, coming off the bridge, because we did hang out just a little bit into their easement, but it's elevated, but we still are bringing that back in just a hair, so we should have no problems with being on their easement in any location.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Cullen?
The right and curve. Mr. Bear's for it, because the main purpose of this trail is connectivity anyway, so we wanna tighten that connectivity as soon as possible.
Anyone else? Okay?
Question? Action step?
Do we, do you need to do something on that?
No, the action step needs to be clean up this plant, deal away with the alternative, get back to Shirley, let him know that this, this is what we, we, we will be looking at, therefore, you'll bring it to the next council meeting.
Okay. Uh, next, next item.
Is there something to be brought back to council? I think if, if it's, I don't know if you can vote on it, I think if, if it's understood that the route...
You need to know what's bid, so I think the council is gonna approve the route, and I think you wanna specify ten feet wide, because that's not actually what we're planning. Thought, they can do it tonight, and then you go split it up and bid it. But I think they gotta tell you what route to bid.
Well, I think I'm hearing that. I think what we are hearing, the route is just the business, is the route that David Shirley first proposed.
We broke rules, I reckon.
I haven't been able to stop you yet.
Well, then. To what Bobby just said, I agree with him in this, make that a motion.
Okay. I have a motion. Any other discussion? Not, there's a paper signature, I'd say aye.
Aye.
No, so? Okay. How does the action step?
Thank you.
Okay, city managers report, you have anything else?
No, the only thing I would say, I, I have to kind of criticize, sometimes justify it and sometimes I think inaccuracy. I felt a little bit embarrassed tonight, I think we had one or two Main Street board members here, and the discussion about, quote, Main Street tearing up the stage made me feel a little bit uncomfortable. I don't know that that happened, so I, I, I know that our Main Street folks dedicate a lot of volunteer time, a lot of volunteer hours to, to the city in terms of cultural events and enrichment programs, and if, if that conversation made anybody uncomfortable, then I certainly want to apologize for that. I don't know, first thing, who tore up the stage. I was at the same meeting that Mr. Rush was, when it was reported to us that the stage came back from a Main Street event with the sound system not as it went out. I don't authoritative to know that, and I, again, have been subject myself to criticisms that were not accurate, and I want to be sure that our Main Street folks don't feel unjustified or be criticized, because I don't think that would be fair.
Let me make one, one other thing. The, the senior exemption that was approved, the, I mean, the senior garbage rate that was increased tonight, will require a budget amendment. Is that correct?
Okay.
Okay, so the next meeting, there will be a budget amendment to make that change in the budget for, for two thousand and fourteen, beginning October first, right?
Is that not what we did?
No, you didn't approve the budget amendment?
No. The budget amendment has to...
You're right, the increase.
The increase, probably all you gotta do is change the revenue...
Just to be a formality.
So, formality, revenue.
Okay.
Charlie, Charlie, following up, Mr. Wood, I've been sitting here thinking, what a great problem it is to have, that we've got people clamoring to use the stage, so many events, so many groups doing so many things in the city. It's a wonderful problem to have. I would ask, maybe if, if, we call ourselves a committee, but Mr. Rush did all the work, if, if maybe the three of us sit down actually as a committee between now and the next meeting, let's come up with a different proposal that, that based on the comments and info we heard tonight. We've got a great thing at this stage, and we don't wanna, don't wanna make it a point of contention, it needs to be a good thing, and, and I think between the three of us, we can come up with a better, better plan based on the input, that's the way it's supposed to be.
Yeah, I want a meeting then, and between that and then, and all that.
And we'll do that.
It's a good idea. Okay, any other discussion? Not, then motion due adjourned. I'll vote as a favor.